Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Foxborough Board of Select meeting for February 11, 2014 at the High School Media Center. Tonight's agenda, 7:00 PM Citizen Input. At 7:05, Chairman Sullivan update. 7:10, which we're actually going to do right away tonight. It'll be Fire Chief Roger Hatfield pending ceremony and recognition. And then 7:45, public hearing, application for one direct where we are tour concert at Gillette Stadium. 8:00 PM, public hearing, application for Luke Bryant, That's My Kind of Night, tour concert at Gillette Stadium. 8:15, Board of Select, an open session, mail tax policy discussion. And 8:45, we'll be going to the executive section with Attorney John Davis, pending litigation with Walter Dutton, insurance discussion. Board of Select, we're going to discuss litigation status strategy regarding pending open meeting law violations, complaints made to the Attorney General, and to conduct strategy session and prepare for non-negotiation with non-union personnel, collective bargaining session for contract negotiation with non-union personnel, union negotiation strategies, United Steel Workers, AFL-CIO-CLC. Okay. Deputy Chief Bagley, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the true republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Chief Hatfield?
First of all, truly on behalf of the men and women of Foxborough Fire Rescue, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen, Bob Cutler, all the family and friends that are here, our chaplain, Father Steve. This is a very special moment for all of us in Foxborough Fire. You know, there's only a few moments that really hit home and in the hearts of every firefighter. The first one is really when you go through the celebration of being pinned and sworn in as a member of a profession that we all hold very near and dear to our hearts. Others would be recognitions that we might get for a job well done, others that we also hope to reach someday, is promotions, someday maybe be a chief. You didn't see them all jumping for that one. And then, you know, really is retirement, to capture exactly everything that we've done in our lives to make our world better and make our communities better. And tonight, we have two of those situations happening tonight. We're going to have a pending swearing-in ceremony for three of our newest members. And then we're going to do some recognitions of some actions that were taken from citizens along with members of the law enforcement and fire department that has one of our friends still with us here today.
Chief, could, um, I also, before your, Deputy Chief Bagley, could we have Father say invocation?
Sure. Father Steve, would you like to come up and say a few words of wisdom?
Just to offer a prayer for our town, in gratitude, we pray this night for the opportunity to be here to bless our town and its citizens. On this night in particular, we ask that you bless the members of our police and fire department who serve us so well. We ask through the invocation this night of Saint Florian and Saint Michael to protect them and us, keep us ever mindful of those less fortunate than us. We ask this as we ask all things through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father.
The first part of our night is going to be our pending and swearing-in. I cannot tell you how proud I am of the three folks that you're going to have come up here. And I think, once you hear their stories, you'll know exactly why. We do a very diligent process to find the right folks that fit Foxborough whenever we hire them. The three that you're going to see tonight are all residents, graduates of Foxborough High, and have worked very, very hard on their own to make sure that they provide the best services for the town of Foxborough and its residents. At this point, I'll have Deputy Chief Bagley get up, say a few words, and bring those folks up here for the swearing-in and pending.
Good evening, everybody. The three young men that we're going to swear in tonight, although they're new to the career service in Foxborough, they're not new to the fire service in general. They all come to us from other departments with a variety of training and experience. They're very highly motivated, they're dedicated, and they fit well among all the rest of the guys. They're going to have a long and very good career, long after many of us aren't around anymore, but, like Chief said, we're very proud of all of them and looking forward to working with them for many years. If we could call Colin Sweeney, Pat Rocket, and Matt Triani up here. Okay, at this point, Robert Cutler is going to do the swearing-in.
So gentlemen, I ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Patrick Rocket.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
and perform
all the duties incumbent
on me as a firefighter paramedic
of the Foxborough Fire Department. And I will obey and be bound by such rules and regulations as now are or may be from time to time established by the government of the Foxborough Fire Department. And the bylaws of the town of Foxborough. So help me God. I state your name.
I, Patrick Rocket.
Hereby accept the position
of firefighter paramedic
in the fire department of the town of Foxborough. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have Cheryl Rocket come up and do the pending on Patrick. Okay, and last but not least, firefighter Colin Sweeney is going to be pinned by his mother, Mara. And for those of you who don't know, Matt, yeah, Matt Collin was graduated number one in his class at the firefighting academy recently. We're going to move into the second part of the program tonight, and it's a recognition ceremony. Before we do that, I just wanted to say a couple things about our paramedic program. Now that we're in 2014, this marks the 14th year that the fire department and the town of Foxborough has invested in the paramedic program. It was established under Chief Boswell at the time, and on a daily basis, those guys make a difference in a lot of people's lives. And, you know, the other firefighters who aren't paramedics work just as hard as those guys, and they also deserve to be recognized too because of the contributions that they make, whether it's a serious accident or a technical rescue or something like that. All the guys, they really go the extra mile and help the public in any way that they can. We're up to 19 out of the 28 firefighters are paramedics. It's a program that we're all very proud of, and any new hires are also paramedics. I'm going to turn it over to the chief to continue with the program.
Deputy, thank you very much. The next component, we're going to actually talk about one of those great rescues that we had. Gary's still here with us with some help from one of our citizens. And with that, I'd have Captain Don Triani get up to give us a little narrative exactly what occurred that evening.
My zone of the country. Okay. January 8, 2014, Foxborough Fire Alarm received a call for a 55-year-old male feeling dizzy and lightheaded at the World's Gym on Moore Street. Dispatch, Rescue 3, Injured 21, were dispatched, and Foxborough Police were also dispatched. En route to the call, Fire Alarm updated companies that the patient now had passed out, was not breathing, and CPR was in progress. CPR was being administered by Casimera Moss, who was at the gym working out. Shortly thereafter, Patrolman Steve McGrath arrived on scene and immediately asked the gym personnel for their automatic defibrillator. He immediately attached it to the patient. Rescue 3 then arrived on scene with firefighter paramedic Rogers and Higgins. At that time, the paramedics began their advanced life support assessment of the patient, which included cardiac activity monitoring. The patient was in a very unusual and rarely seen heart rhythm called torsades de pontes, which was interpreted very quickly by both paramedics. Injured 21 arrived with firefighter Shepperson and myself, and we assisted with breathing for the patient. The patient was then shocked twice and administered cardiac drugs. Within approximately 30 seconds, the patient's heart came back to a normal rhythm, and he had a blood pressure and normal pulses. C-3 then arrived on scene also with firefighter paramedics Nagabads and Kelleher, and they insisted on treatment and removing the patient from the third-floor gym to the rescue. The chain of events I just described, especially bystander CPR performed by Casimera Moss, and immediate recognition of that rhythm, and treatment of this heart rhythm, that's treatment of this heart rhythm, saved the life of this patient, Mr. Gary Sidroni, who is here with us tonight. As a shift commander, this is a proud moment for me to work with such highly trained and dedicated personnel. In closing, I'd like to congratulate all of you in saving the life of Mr. Sidroni. We're going to call up individually each of the firefighters and the others that were involved. First we'd like to call up is Casimera Moss. Also tonight, from the American Heart Association, is the Heart Saver Hero Award presented to First firefighter paramedic, Michael Kelleher. The next one, she could not be with us tonight, firefighter paramedic Kristen Nagabads. Foxborough Patrolman Stephen McGrath.
If I could have Chief Edward O'Leary come up? He has a special...
Chief, if we could get a picture of everybody that got a citation with Mr. Sidroni. That'd be great. I think the paper would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So could everybody come back for him, please?
If I could, Mr. Sullivan, the department doesn't have the same recognition. We engendered about 20 years ago a series of medals to be awarded to different individuals. In the last 20 years, we've had very few medals awarded for the Life Saving Award. And tonight, on behalf of the Foxborough Police Department and our community, I'd like to present Steve with the Life Saving Medal as a result of his actions that night in January at the World Gym. It showed an understanding of being able to handle a critical incident, to know what to do to continue the operation until the paramedics could arrive, and it was outstanding police work. And again, I'd like to compliment him and present him with this medal and service bar that he can wear in the future.
Now, if we can get them all over there, Gary?
Yeah, feel free, folks, if you want to go take your own picture, feel free. Would the gentleman like to say a few words?
I'll ask Gary if he wants to say a few words.
Bring everybody back.
Gary's going to come up right after.
Yes, he's now.
Just trying to let Frank know.
Frank can wait.
Folks, if I could just get everybody's attention just for a second, Gary would like to say a few words. And then we can turn the meeting back over to our fire selectmen.
Thank you, Gary.
I'll make it brief, because I know there's a lot of things going on this evening, but...
You can take all the time you want.
When you have a life-changing event like this, you certainly look at things in a different perspective. You know, I'm 55 years old, I've got a wonderful family, I've got twin boys, I've got a loving wife. What happened to me, I don't remember a heck of a lot of. So what, I went to work out at the gym on a regiment. I try to keep myself in fairly good physical condition, but none of us never, you know, if you haven't been to the doctor in some time, I'm starting to become an advocate for, you know, getting to know the inside of your body a little bit. And I certainly thought that I knew it, but evidently, you know, you never know. I'm not going to go into details about that. I just, as far as a life-changing event goes, I made some new friends. And in person tonight, I met Casimera Moss for the first time, and she's going to be a friend for life. Officer Steve McGrath, I spoke with him over the phone. Steve told me he had some health issues of his own, and he kind of knew exactly what I was going through, and he helped me through it, and God bless both of you guys. As far as the Foxborough Fire Department, I can't say enough. I, you know, again, these guys were, you know, Captain Triani said it as best as anybody could. They just, they're, they take their jobs seriously, and, you know, none of us should ever take anybody for granted, because they're the reason I'm here today. And again, all my new friends on the fire department, the police department, Casimera, her family, I just want to thank you all. Appreciate it.
Well said. Any comments from the board, Jim?
Like I said, this is my fourth year up here, and this is probably the nicest meeting that I've attended that probably can define what Foxborough's about, you know, starting with Father Steve, all the way up, all the way down to the chiefs, I guess, if you want to. And the police chief, the fire chief, assistant chief. And more importantly, I wish the cameras could pick, you know, the people that are in this room, the families, the kids, the girlfriends, husbands, wives that are here today, and then the three individuals, the three firemen that got pinned today. Your reputation's preceded you. So very happy that you're from Foxborough. Your roots are very deep here, and this is what it's all about. So thank you all for coming, and it's just, thank you for allowing us to participate in this.
Chaney?
And thank you very much for having the ceremony here tonight. It just proves once again that the people in Foxborough are in very good hands with our fire department and our police department and all the people who work for the town of Foxborough. And I want to personally thank the police and the fire for what you do every day.
I think we don't thank our public safety officials enough. We often just assume that they'll always be there when we need them, and miraculously, they are. And we are eternally grateful for that. So thank you very much.
I've said it before, and I'll say it again publicly, we have the best public safety in the state of McCallum, Massachussetts. I've always been proud of these guys and ladies. Do an outstanding job, and they know I'm proud of them, and the board is too. I mean, the whole community, what they do, they step up all the time. So I'm glad they're there for us, because when we call, we really need them. So thank you, guys and girls. Appreciate everything. Take care.
A moment there. Clear?
Yeah. Take your time. If anybody wants to stay for the rest of the good stuff, we'll be here.
Do action items?
Yeah, let's go right, you're the clerk, right? We'll be with you in a couple minutes, folks. We're just going to let these couple hundred people go back to their lives. We're going to pull out our action guys. We've got 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Glad we know how many the room can hold.
Well, yeah. Okay, we're going to get back into the meeting now, and we're going to go to action, because we've got 15 minutes to go through here.
Are we got, you're going to do the...
Yeah, citizen.
I know.
Is there anybody here for citizen's input?
I've had to do that a couple times.
He and none. Okay, we'll move on. We're going to go right to get the action items out of the way. Lorraine, please.
The first item is the acceptance of a gift donation of $500 for the Veterans Services. This is a donation in memory of Navy wife and Navy mother Dorothy Sullivan. The donors are Blue Cross Blue Shield of Massachusetts, Mrs. Sullivan's employer, and we want to thank Blue Cross Blue Shield for their donation. I move that we accept this check for $500.
Alls in favor? Aye. Roger, could you shut that door, please? Could you, thank you. Okay, Lorraine, number two.
Okay, the next item is for information purposes. This is a site plan for, a site plan review application for 35 and 45 Pennice Road Public Hearing, Red Snapper Realty Trust. That's in our packet.
Again, if you have any comments, you just make those to the planning board.
To the planning board?
Yep.
Thank you. The third item is a new Hackney license for Gordon &amp; Lyons III. This is...
It says a driver for East Coast limo?
For East Coast limo, right. It's been signed by Chief O'Leary. So I move that we approve the Hackney license application for Gordon &amp; Lyons III.
I'll second the motion. Discussion? Alls in favor? Okay.
Fourth item is from the Foxborough Regional Charter School. It's for a 5K to 10K road race on 10/25/14, 9:00 to 10:30 AM. It's to benefit the friends of the Foxborough Regional Charter School for the retention and recruitment of high-quality staff members. Chief O'Leary has signed this, and police details as needed will be brought on. So I move that we approve the application for the 5 to 10K road race scheduled for 10/25/14.
I'll second the motion. New discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. Okay, last one, Lorraine.
The first year, there were $75,000 appropriated, but it was for a specific purpose, for paving a portion of Mill Street, and that's what it had to be used for. And there were remaining funds from that that weren't used. At the subsequent annual town meeting, we had those re-appropriated for general road, highway purposes. The second year, we had $100,000 available for the program, and that year, we did that big piece of 106 between the bridges, 495 and 95, and we did a part of Coacassus Street around where Ledgsville Road is and Elm Street and Winter Street up that way. Also did a couple of side streets. And then we did quite a bit of local, just small projects on local streets. This past, the 2014 fiscal year was the first year we had substantial funding under it. We had $295,000 from the meals tax, and we had our Chapter 90 money, which came late, as usual. We didn't get the Chapter 90 money until August 8th. So we concentrated on using all the Chapter 90 money first, so that we could save some of the meals tax money from fiscal 2014 for the spring, in case the Chapter 90 money was going to be late again, which it usually is. And in doing the 2015 budget, what I did is I grouped the projects basically according to the treatment methods that are going to be used to make the repairs. And you'll see that there's a pretty good spread, and the reason for that is I picked all the worst road service rating streets unless they had other problems that we couldn't get to. Like, if they had asbestos cement pipe under the pavement, you won't see those on that heavy-duty improvement list yet. But they're on the horizon, and we're going to be doing those. And so that's what the 2015 program is. If you have any questions about the program itself, I'd be more than happy to answer them. The spring meals tax money that we're going to be using from leftover 2014 is all going to be used on crack sealing, because we have a lot of subdivision roads that really aren't in bad shape, but they've got a lot of cracks in them, and water is the enemy of all pavement. And if you do a good aggressive crack seal program, you usually can get an additional five years without having to do any more work on those roads, and then maybe come back and do something else after that. So we try to suit the program to the condition of the road, but at the same time, pay attention to taking care of normal routine maintenance, so that we don't have pavements getting in worse condition every year. If we do nothing with a road, it automatically deteriorates two to three points a year, depending on how severe the weather is that winter. And I can tell you that this winter hasn't exactly been the best one I've ever been through. I had plans to do what I call the front door of Foxborough's industrial and commercial part, Foxborough Boulevard, and I had planned to try to use a less costly treatment, but this winter ruined it, and I'm going to have to go with asphalt on that road. There's no way I can save the pavement without doing that. And the same thing is true with the Judge Warren Road, which tees into the piece of Foxborough Boulevard. We have a brand-new building, a brand-new rehab building opening up there next year, or this year, that's going to employ about 400 people, Meditech, and I would like to see that road finished before Meditech gets their project done, so that when the people come in, they'll have a good road to travel on, instead of the pothole mess that's out there right now. So if anybody has any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
Could you just spend a minute, I know you did Moore Street and East Belcher, and it was a...
I just overlaid them with a...
Can you explain, if people are watching tonight, the difference between paving and leveling course and Cape Seal? Because I know you did one thing, people were thinking it was paved, a poor pavement job, which was not the case.
Right. Both Moore Street and East Belcher Street, the part that we did, have had problems. They were both, they had extremely low road service ratings. And we spend an awful lot of time in the winter on roads like that, just patching potholes. And the asphalt that we have to buy to patch potholes is more expensive than the asphalt that we use to do regular paving, by quite a bit. We buy, we pick it up at the plant, but our bid price is $85 a ton. I can buy asphalt and have it laid and delivered to the job site, and have a paving crew there, and rollers and everything else, for $65 a ton. Don't ask me why, but that's what the price is. And one of the very, most difficult jobs to do is to patch potholes in the winter, because if there's water in a pothole and you try to patch it, it doesn't work. It just doesn't work. And that's what we had this winter, in many cases, after several storms, lots of water. It rained following, or during some of the storms. So what we did is we overlaid those with a very thin leveling course, and that's what you see on Moore Street today, and that's what you see on that part of East Belcher Street today. However, in the spring, we're going to put a full pavement on those, permanent pavement. There'll be like a new condition then, and they'll get a road service rating up around in the high 90s. And it'll be a long time before we have to do any additional work on those two major roads. And they're two, they are two major roads in town. The Cape Seal project, I looked at a whole, I looked at every road in town, even after we had them rated by the consultants during the pavement maintenance management plan preparation. And I felt that I needed to do something with roads that were too severely cracked just to do a crack seal on. So I cherry-picked the worst ones and the most difficult ones to work on. And the first thing we did with those roads is we went in and we raised and leveled all of the pavement structure, the catch basins, the manholes, the water gates, and any cast iron device that was in the roadway, we brought it up to good level, good condition, and there was a lot of work involved in that. We did the same thing with the areas that we're going to crack seal in the spring, and that is a difficult job. I can get two, I can probably get maybe three or four basins a day if I have to knock out all the asphalt around them, and take the castings off, and regrade the top of the manhole, and then put the casting back on, level it up, and cement it in. It's just a lot of work, and I've only got seven people, so it's hard to do a lot of those. But we managed to get through it this year. And then what the Cape Seal does, the first step in the Cape Seal is to go in and seal all the cracks. And that's what they do. They go in and they use a rubberized asphalt with fibers in it to seal the cracks. That's immediately followed by what they call a chip seal, and that's where they apply a fairly heavy overlay of asphalt emulsion to the surface of the road. And right behind it, they have these chippers that actually spread stone chips into that asphalt emulsion. It takes a little while for the asphalt emulsion to cure, usually about two or three hours, and then it binds the chips down to the road surface. About a week after you get that chip sealed down, you have to sweep the excess stone off, and then it's followed by what's called a micro-surface, and that's what you see in those developments that I did the Cape Seal on. What the micro-surface is, it's a mixture of mineral filler, asphalt emulsion, and Portland cement. And it takes about an hour and a half to set up, once you apply it. It goes down at about 5/8 of an inch, but it completely coats the chip seals, so that the road surface is smooth, and people can ride bikes or skateboards or whatever they want to do without getting skinned up if they happen to take a fall. And it's much easier to deal with subdivisions with the Cape Seal than it is with just chip seal. The people that live in subdivisions would be calling the board constantly if we just did chip seals in residential areas. It's not a good program to do in residential areas. It wasn't 15, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, and it isn't today either. So what the Cape Seal does is it not only levels out the road surface to a degree, not perfect, but to a degree, it seals it with three actual layers of asphalt, the crack seal, the emulsion that's laid down before they put the chips down, and then the micro-surface, and basically stops water penetrating the subgrade. And you can see that even today, if you go out to like Dudley Hill, those streets up there, that's a big glacial drumlin with bad soil, but the roads are in pretty good shape now, because we Cape Sealed all of them. The only downside to it is when you first put it down, it comes out a little ripply, and people were concerned about that. But the first big snowstorm of the winter, when you get the blades down, you take all the ripples out, and in the spring, it's going to look like new pavement. So I think it's effective, it's a lot cheaper than asphalt. It runs about, roughly about $6.75 a square yard compared to $10 for asphalt. So it's a good program for certain applications. You can't use it everywhere, it doesn't work everywhere. This next year's program, I don't have a lot of Cape Seal in it right now, but after we have the discussion tonight, I may add a whole lot of streets to it, depending on what the board decides. So, any other questions?
I'm good.
Giant sinkhole at the corner of Chestnut and Mechanic. Edit your list.
Chestnut's high up. We're going to do the, we're going to rebuild the whole east portion, the Chestnut between Mechanic and Coacassus. That's the one we did all the water work on last summer, and we're going in and take the sidewalk out. I'm going to put a slope-faced granite edging along that side, and build a new sidewalk behind the edging, and then rebuild the whole road surface. So that part of Chestnut Street is done. We have replaced all the old bad pipe under it, done all the service connections, no more black water in there, knock on wood. And that's what we're going to do with Mechanic Street this summer, from Chestnut Street all the way up to the Sharon Line.
You know what might be a good idea, because you brought up the water? You took the opportunity to put in the Foxborough Reporter last year, kind of a summary of why the water is during that period of time, and you kind of explained to everybody. If, you know, it could be bullet items, but a couple paragraphs in the reporter that says, "Look, we've done X amount of percentage of the 88 miles of road, this is what you see, this is why you see it." So when people see the chip seal, they don't think it's just a poor pavement, it's an economical step to the next one. I think that would help a lot of people understand it.
Good idea. Good idea. We'll do it.
Okay, great. We'll continue the conversation at roughly 10:15, I believe. Yep, so, okay.
I apologize for my voice, but I think I've put up too many hours as of last week.
You ready for Thursday?
As ready as we can be.
Reason to hang, or...
Yeah. I would think so. But these two public hearings are going to go quick, I would think, and then we're going to go, we can go right into executive session, and then come back to open session.
When we get there, I'm not sure we need to go into executive session at all for this, but we can talk about that when you get to... Okay. All right. Public hearing announcement, 7:45, please, Lorraine.
Town of Foxborough Board of Selectmen hearing notice. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough Revised Bylaws, Article 5, Section 6, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 11, 2014, beginning at 7:45 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC for the One Direction Where We Are concert. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to start, Dan.
Yeah, please. If it's okay, Mark, can I give just a three-minute background before getting into the One Direction specific show, just to kind of frame why we're here? Okay. We were approached about this, and we realize it's a very unique situation to be applying before you tonight for consecutive, for consecutive dates. And when we are approached by Live Nation to do so, we spent a lot of time internally just talking about, you know, with all the events we have going on, how we could handle it, if we could handle it. And we, and there were a few reasons that we, well-thought-out reasons why we wanted to move forward and have the discussions with Chief O'Leary and Chief Hatfield. One was dealing with Live Nation. Live Nation, we haven't, unfortunately, haven't done a lot of business with Live Nation over the last six years, seven years. Live Nation is the biggest concert promoter in the world. They're also an artist management company, so they have the management rights, the touring rights for a lot of stadium acts like U2, or Justin Timberlake, or One Direction. So it was important to us to give this consideration due to trying to build a relationship with Live Nation, which would hopefully turn into more business for Gillette and for Foxborough in the future. And also, and Live Nation was very upfront with us when they called us about these dates, and it was either, you know, come to Gillette with these two, if a deal could be struck, or they would take them and go to Boston and play them in Boston. And it wasn't posturing, it was just, we were their first choice. So we wanted to see if it was possible to do these two dates. Live Nation will be the promoter for both One Direction and Luke Bryan. So we talked internally, and we have some, our operations and guest service staff here that can fill in some of the blanks in terms of our staffing confidence. But we met with Chief O'Leary and Chief Hatfield, and we met with them several times, and we talked about this concept. They went back and talked to their senior staff about whether they could do it as well. So we fortunately got together, and it was a week after the divisional game, and they told us that, you know, with some conditions, they certainly could handle it. It would be a challenge, but something that we collectively could do. So, and Jess will get into some of the details about gates and, you know, ticket prices, etc. But for One Direction, for example, we were able to condense the show. So instead of going to 11:15 at night, they've agreed that they would end all three shows, not just the Saturday show, at 10:30 at night to help with staffing. Our research has shown that One Direction is a much younger audience, even than Taylor Swift. So Taylor Swift, last year, we've done five Taylor Swift shows, 57,000 people, I think we had 10, 11 custodies at the last show. So, and this being a younger crowd, don't expect public safety issues to any degree at these One Direction shows. Biggest thing we've had, and we've done successfully with Taylor Swift, is the parent pickup and drop-off, and we happen to have a perfect setup for that with our self-retail lots. It's ideal for parents to come in, drop. They could stay, and there's no fee, and it's a central location, but it's large enough where they could do parent pickup and parent drop-off, pickup and drop-off for their kids. And then on the Luke Bryan show, we talked about it not being a festival, it just being a concert. In other cities, Luke Bryan is playing, the show starts as early as 4:30. In Foxborough, it would be 6:00 PM start, which would mean 5:00 PM gates, and it's up to Chief O'Leary, but theoretically a 3:00 PM parking lot. So it would not be our New England Country Music Festival, it wouldn't be branded as the festival. We would not include an opportunity for past festival buyers to participate in the pre-sale. We talked about a handful of things like no hawking beer in the stands for the Luke Bryan show at all. And actually, there was a benefit that we got from the chiefs, we collectively thought, of having that concert on a Sunday as opposed to a Saturday, where Monday is, you know, the next day being a workday. Four days is certainly a challenge, and you'll hear, you know, some of the things we collectively have come up... So Taylor Swift, last year, we've done five Taylor Swift shows, fifty-seven thousand people, I think we had ten, eleven custodies at the last show, and this being a younger crowd. Don't expect public safety issues to any degree at these One Direction shows. Biggest thing we've had, and we've done successfully with Taylor Swift is the parent pickup and drop off, and we happen to have a perfect setup for that with our self-retail lots. It's ideal for parents to come in, drop, they could stay, and there's no fee, and it's a central location. But it's large enough where they could do parent pickup and parent drop off, pick up and drop off for their kids. And then on the Luke Bryan show, we talked about it not being a festival, it just being a concert. In other cities, Luke Bryan is playing, the show starts as early as four thirty. In Foxborough, it would be six PM start, which would mean five PM gates, and it's up to Chief O'Leary, but theoretically a three PM parking lot. So it would not be our New England Country Music Festival, it wouldn't be branded as the festival. We would not include an opportunity for past festival buyers to participate in the pre-sale. We talked about a handful of things like no hawking beer in the stands for the Luke Bryan show at all. And actually, there was a benefit that we got from the Chiefs, we collectively thought, of having that concert on a Sunday as opposed to a Saturday where Monday is, you know, the next day being a workday. Four days is certainly a challenge, and you'll hear, you know, some of the things we collectively have come up with, and it was a great collaborative effort, break rooms, for example. We tested this a year ago with Kenny Chesney. But for these shows, and we do it for all four shows, the idea is to take over both levels of our press box and make that a public safety break room, just, you know, with catering, dock areas, debrief areas, place for them, any public safety personnel to go and just recharge for a bit, and just get out of any of the noise of the event. We talked about putting up those holding cells that we do for the New England Country Music Festival, even though I don't think any of us feel that they'll be needed, but they'll be in place. And they can be in place both at the stadium and at the public safety building if Chief wants, and just in case, though they'll be there as contingency. And we also talked about advanced trips for any personnel that like to go see, you know, the crowd at a Luke Bryan show to see, you know, if there's anything different that we haven't experienced before. And we can do the same for One Direction, although I think we've done a lot of kids bands in the past, but that opportunity is out there. And we spend a lot of time talking about covering any cost that the town may incur for public safety for the event, and make sure that there's no impact on the community, no impact on the town resources for any event, any of these four events at all. And we do the same for the George Strait Show that we have the end of May. The other two areas that we talked at length about was North Street and any traffic on North Street. And every event is different, the profile is different of the attendee. You know, we find for the kids acts, Taylor Swift's, and probably for One Direction, high occupancy per car. So we don't expect a lot of backup onto North Street. However, we've offered to the Chief, and we will do it for all the shows if you'd like to have an NFL-type of checkpoint setup. Happy to, you know, fund it, provide the signage, directional signage, et cetera. We would take care of passes to the residents, so they wouldn't be impacted. And it'd be just like an NFL setup with its checkpoints coming down beach, coming across in Pacey, and we would do all that direct mail to do that. Last thing was the cabs. We understand that cabs are an issue at these concerts. Probably not so much with One Direction, but again, we'll offer this for all the shows, even for the George Strait Show. There seems to be a lot of cab drop off and pickup at Ashcroft Lane on North Street, and also at the McDonald's, Hercules Plaza, and those areas. So what we'd like to do is work with the cab companies and have our, one of our lots, it's a large lot, Lot Two, which is if you come in from Rodman Ford, and before you take a left and circle back up to Route One, that lot that we store snow in, we'd make that a cab stand, so the cabs could come in for free, drop off, they could stage there, pick up, it's one central location. So all our guest service staff would know if someone's looking for a cab, that's the location. And we'll do that for all of our shows. And then, I know that's a lot of stuff, and Jess is going to go over some stuff, but the thought was, came through us, I think this was from Chief Hatfield, about doing an ad in the newspaper, you know, a week or two before the event, just to remind everybody about what's happening, what the road restrictions may be, may not be, whatever the Chief decides, just to remind everybody about traffic patterns and the timing of the event. So we'll happily do that. And then, lastly, I just wanted to officially, you know, go on record as saying, we understand this is absolutely not precedent-setting, and the only reason we are before you tonight is that it's three boy bands and then a concert. We would not be here if it was three concerts and a boy band, or two and two, or if it were, you know, four Bruce Springsteen shows or Paul McCartney shows, we would not be here for that. The only reason we're before you, and we have such confidence, is that it's a kids band, and we know the history, and we know how to work well with the parents and the kids at these events. And we, I mean, we, meaning the stadium and public safety. We've met with the Town of Walpole, town administrator there, and he supports it, as does Chief Stillman and Chief Bagley and Bailey, excuse me. And we met with the Route One Business Association, the Executive Board, and they unanimously support it. The one issue that was brought up there was the mass tax-free holiday. And I'll feel that that holiday will be the following weekend, it won't be the weekend of these shows. So the Route One Business Association unanimously supports it. And then also with the Stadium Advisory, we respectfully went to them once, informally, and just laid it all out to them. We know it was a lot to digest, and wanted to let them think about it. Met again the week later to get any thoughts, and fortunately, because of the collaboration with the Chiefs, et cetera, they unanimously supported it as well. So I think Jim Nolan is here, and if you would like to have Jim talk to you about our staffing level. I know both Chiefs have pressure-tested both Jim and Mark Briggs to make sure that we could handle it before they took it back to their senior staff. So Jim is available if you'd like that.
Okay, one would like Jess, one would like Jess get into her?
Sure, yeah, I'll just walk through the details right now with that. I mean, obviously, Dan touched upon the major issues at hand, office fatigue, general traffic. This event is exactly the same event that we've been before you already on. Ending at ten thirty, we're asking for Saturday, the ninth, August ninth now. And again, we will have the same parent pickup and drop off set up in place that we have had in the past for Taylor Swift, and that we will have for the first two dates of the show. We are asking for gates at six PM, and music will start at seven, with the event ending at ten thirty. And again, all three of these concerts will end at ten thirty PM. The ticket pricing is the same, so tickets range from forty-four dollars and five cents to one hundred and twelve fifty-five. We have got an entirely reserved stage, an area, no GA, no pit, and we're estimating a full sellout at fifty thousand people.
Okay, board have any questions at this point in time?
What were the dates? Because we have a date of August ninth, but you said there were four?
Your next application is the.
The next one has three?
You've already approved the first two.
Oh, okay.
So the seventh and the eighth have already been approved and licensed, and this is for the ninth.
Mark, this is Mike from the committee. We had extensive and intensive discussions with the Chiefs. We were concerned about Manning, and we were guaranteed that Manning and staffing would not be a problem over those four days, that they would be able to come up. Both the fire and police support in the stadium said that they would be able to have their adequate staffing as well. And we're quite satisfied with that. There were also concerns raised regarding the neighborhoods, basically the Halliwell area and Reservoir Estates, which are the two closest. And we have, of the twelve members of the committee, four people actually reside there in those two areas. We received no input, no complaints, no issues raised. So therefore, the committee felt with no input from those neighborhoods that we were okay regarding noise.
Obviously, if there was a problem, they would be here tonight, too, because this is well advertised, if anybody had a major issue with it. Other than public officials and stadium personnel and town employees, and I don't see anybody else here. So I think we can expedite this thing pretty quickly here. Does anybody on the board have an issue with this? Has anybody got any feedback from anybody saying?
No, Dan touched on things that I was considering, you know, four days as opposed, you know, so on. But anyway, North Street, I mean, I have had people on North Street that were contacting me, again, about the signs. But in reading the application, Chief O'Leary had noted that you were going to work out something with the limos and the taxis on, which is a great idea, I think. However, I think I'd still like to see the signs on North Street just for those people who don't go up to that, you know, just so they won't be idling, you know, the limos and the taxis. But you touched on the things that I had been thinking of, you touched on the things that we had brought up before. So thank you very much for addressing those, coming with the information.
The stadium did a great job in preparing this application. Every question that we were going to ask, they had already had the answer.
Jan, you all set?
Yep.
James?
Yeah, just, I mean, this is the first time I've heard so much dialogue on the distinguishing, to distinguish the types of concerts, you know, the younger kids, the older population. And I think that's good that you guys are discussing it. The things that I'm hearing tonight, the discussions with Walpole, the taxi drop off, the break area, all these things are, I know they're at some point touched with you guys, but it's nice to hear that you guys are working closely on that. I live, you know, close to North Street, sound has never been an issue, and I can hear it in the area, but it's never been an issue to complain. So it doesn't surprise me that there's not a lot of people complaining about the noise. You know, it's an open area concert, and I think people expect to hear it. The traffic is the big issue. The concerts that I've seen, other than the Country Fest, hasn't been a big, you know, gridlock area where there's four of them. I'd like to see it explored a little bit with the taxi stand, the advertisement and the mailings that you do, if you can address the North Street, and, you know, putting roadblocks and passes, I hate to do it if, sometimes that's more of a burden to the neighbors to have the road blocked off than it is not to have it. I just don't know, you know, four concerts in a row, if it's going to be a big issue with the neighbors or not. And I'm assuming that's what you guys talked about as well, and your feeling is not to do the roadblocks or do the roadblocks?
We would like to see them do the same traffic patterns and roadblocks.
As the Patriots games?
Yes.
All right.
And James, they let you through, you know, pretty much if they know you're familiar with the area. I know some, they might not know some relatives, but I mean, I've gone to people's houses up there. And so I don't think it's really an issue. They're pretty sensitive to the people that come through. I mean, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's, I just don't know if you thought it warrant doing that or not. And the big, the three things that always seem to be a topic, public safety, the insurance and the cost impact, but it sounds like everything that is being impacted with respect to cost policing is being mitigated by the Patriots. So I think it's very complete, and I like the discussion that you guys had, so no objection.
Lorraine?
You know, I think this is really well done, I appreciate that. And especially, hopefully this will address the North Street issues. And I just wanted to ask, will there be a detail there to keep people moving so that they're not idling there and direct them to the special taxi place?
Thank you, Edward.
One of the components about the traffic congestion is usually develops when the event is going on. It's not prior to the event, it's just prior to the end of the event, because then everybody's migrating. As part of the action plan that we'll have in place, although I don't perceive it's going to be as much of an issue with the One Direction, but probably will be for football and the country show that we're going to see, to have a team of bicycles up on North Street, as well as our motorcycle officers, to try and keep those people moving. We'll have signs, I'll see if Mr. Hill's crew can assist in putting them up about no standing or parking in that immediate area, and just add visibility for the neighbors in that immediate area that have to deal with that traffic just hanging around and creating more noise when people start talking.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
One thing to keep in mind about a concert as opposed to a football game, first of all, the attendance is about twenty thousand less on a sellout. And second of all, the traffic coming in and out of Putnam Way is far less than you have during an NFL game.
Thank you, Lorraine, anything else?
The only other question I had was regarding the insurance, I know we're discussing it later on with John Davis.
Yeah, so I'll give you a little update on that, and we will have a more full discussion with him after the, in the executive session this evening. So I asked him for tonight's purposes, for any suggestions. The suggestion that he had was that it be, if you feel comfortable with everything else, that you license it conditionally, with the idea that you pick a specific date, say, May first, to have all of the insurance issues resolved by that date, and if they're not, then we deal with the issue at that time. But, you know, that's his suggestion, and I believe, you know, we're starting that process a lot earlier this year. We should have that resolved very quickly. And he'll have a better, you know, explanation for you tonight about where all of the insurance pieces fit. But for purposes of tonight, that was his suggestion, and I think it makes a lot of sense.
So May first would be three months before these concerts? And it's really, it's after June thirtieth is where the issue rises?
After June thirtieth is any potential issues, but.
That apply also to the other two concerts that we've already?
Those are, yeah, those were conditioned upon us getting some language from John, so.
Can we use that date? Because there was no date.
It's going to affect all of them, because once you resolve the insurance issue, it's resolved. So if you pick it for this, it's going to apply to them anyways, because it's going to happen before those dates, so.
You good, Lorraine?
Yep, thank you.
Is the public hearing, anybody else wish to be heard?
Mark, just one clarification. The, first of all, Mike and I are not co-chair persons. We are co-vice chairpersons to the committee, unless George decided to step down while he's been away, so.
Where is George?
George is on the road, usually.
He's in Raleigh, North Carolina.
Today. Last week, Florida.
He wanted more storms.
I hope he's not in the ice storm.
That's right. But the other thing that I think was not mentioned, and it was brought forward by the stadium, was that they were going to request that the MBTA rail service also be activated and requested. So that it just helps the situation a bit more.
Great, thank you.
And that's still the train from Providence that comes north, and then from Boston that comes south and parks there?
Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody else wish to be heard in this matter? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Any discussion, alls in favor?
Aye.
Any more discussion amongst the board? Lorraine, would you care to make a motion?
I move that we approve the license for One Direction Where We Are tour for August ninth, 2014, seven PM to ten thirty PM, subject to the receipt of appropriate acceptable insurance coverage by May, no later than May first, 2014.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? Alls in favor? Okay, there's one done. And our acting clerk, in case anybody hasn't noticed, he's usually not quiet enough, but John Gray is not here tonight, he's away. So Lorraine is acting as clerk and vice chair tonight, so. Lorraine, if you could, the next public hearing notice?
Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough Revised General Bylaws, Article 5, Section 6, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 11, 2014, beginning at eight PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC for the Luke Bryan That's My Kind of Night tour. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you, Lorraine, okay, Jess?
So without going over everything that we've already reviewed in the previous. We're requesting Sunday, August tenth, for this event. And just to reiterate one thing that Dan had previously pointed out, this being a Sunday show, and also this not being branded as the New England Country Music Festival, simply a standalone country concert at the stadium, we are anticipating far fewer issues than we have had in the past. We are asking for a later gate time as well as a later music time, so gates at five PM and music at six PM. The ticket pricing, as well as the stage layout, are exactly the same right now as the One Direction shows, so the forty-four dollar ticket right up to a hundred and twelve dollars. And unlike previous country shows that we've had at the stadium, everything will be reserved. So there is no GA, there is no pit, it'll be the same exact floor and seating as One Direction. Requesting the standard curfew time of eleven fifteen at night. And with respect to any parking, that'll be established closer to the event date with our public safety officials.
Thank you. Anything we would like to talk about, or is it Groundhog Day, we're just going to have the same questions, basically correct?
I just had a couple of different ones. Again, I'm sorry, Chief O'Leary, where are you? Parking capacity, I know you will open at the lots, I just wanted to ask if they- I just wanted to ask if there had been discussion with the Route 1 business owners about, you know, the different lot opening times and, you know, how, again, just how that would be handled?
We had started having, Dan mentioned the fact that he met with your executive board about the pattern of, you know, what we hope to open those lots. I was meeting with Dan and Matt Pekarski, the traffic engineer for the stadium, and I've been in contact with Lieutenant Stewart to start doing up the traffic plan for that particular Sunday, because it's more of a challenge than perhaps a regular Patriots game, even though the crowd is bigger with the Patriots game.
Yeah, okay. I just remembered last year there were concerns raised by the other lot owners about the times.
But I think last year we did a better job in holding the lots, and then when they were open, it was more uniform across the board by the time we did it.
Okay.
Do you all see it?
Again, I think very thorough, appreciate all of the additional work that's gone into this. There's a lot of attention to taking into consideration, I'm sure, the exhaustion factor that's coming in here for the fire and police workers, so that's, thank you very much.
Ginny?
No, wasn't.
James?
No, I know there's a lot of heavy lifting to get this caliber of show. I know you guys worked hard on it, and the show's very complete. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anybody else in the audience wish to be heard in this matter? Seeing none? We entertain a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
A second?
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, I move that we approve the Gillette Stadium license application for the Luke Bryan That's My Kind of Night Tour, scheduled for August 10th, 2014, 6:00 PM to 11:15 PM, subject to the receipt of an acceptable insurance coverage policy on or before May 1st, 2014.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right on time. Mr. Scollins, are you here? Hey, Randy, how are you?
Evening. Good yourself, Chairman, Mr. Chairman? Some materials.
We are gonna discuss now at the meals tax policy discussion amongst the board, and Randy Scollins, our financial officer is here too, give us a little education on what kind of money we have and where it's gonna go.
Sure. So three moving, or four moving pieces here. First piece is just what we've done with the meals tax to date and what we've raised. So as you can see on the sheet here, I've got, you know, fiscal '12, we collected $667,000. But since that was the first year and it was a stub year, only 10 months, we only appropriated $375,000, $300,000 to OPEB and $75,000 to road reconstruction. So there was $292,000 that was collected in that year that was not appropriated, has been certified as free cash and still is sitting in free cash. So that was fiscal '12. In fiscal '13, we had a full year, $819,000 in meals tax. We appropriated that year $100,000 for OPEB, $100,000 for roads, but we had, again, a remainder of $319,000. Again, the reason we've underappropriated in those first two years, those are our first two years with the revenue stream. We weren't sure exactly what the levels were gonna be, if they were gonna be sustainable. So in this year, in FY '14, we appropriated $795,000, $500,000 for OPEB, $295,000 for roads. And if we hit our target, we're looking to collect about $844,000, you know, we may be about $49,000 in the black. But that wouldn't be able to be appropriated, you know, until the following year. So just with the amounts that haven't been appropriated from FY '12 and FY '13 receipts, which are now sitting in free cash, but I've got them, you know, earmarked their meals tax receipts, and to be compliant with the board's policy, only be appropriated for roads and OPEB. So there's $610,782 that can be appropriated at the next town meeting for either of those purposes or whatever the board desires. So looking at fiscal '15, I'm projecting, again, with only a half year of this year's receipts, $869,000 in meals tax, and again, consistent with our policy to increase the funding for OPEB, because we're still not funding at what's called the ARC, annual required contribution, if you recall, our strategy has been to build up to that, you know, slowly. And so we continue to go up the ladder, if you will. So I'm recommending $600,000 from that $869 for OPEB. The remainder for roads, $269,000. And that still leaves $600 and roughly $11,000 to be appropriated. And before we talk about that, I just, I did a very simple projection here on the sheet that you see here to look out for the next seven years beyond FY '15 to look at, to contrast the projected revenues expected from meals tax. And it's assumed 3% increase, do we have a longer history with this thing, you know, 3% annually? You know, that's the estimate that, you know, I would recommend. I wouldn't recommend going much higher than that until we see something like that sustained. So if, the strategy that, you know, that I've recommended is that we ultimately get up to funding the ARC, the annual required contribution. So even with $600,000 that we're contributing, or I'm recommending that we contribute next year to OPEB, we still have about another million and a half to go to get up to the annual required contribution. So most communities haven't started, and those that have started, you know, most of them that have started are, you know, getting their toe in the water, and they're slowly trying to incorporate that into their operating budgets. We've been fortunate so far, you know, we have this additional revenue stream that we've been using for this purpose. So I recommend we continue to do that, but we look to get up to the fully funded level, another million and a half beyond $600,000 or 2.1 million annually over the next eight years. So going up $100,000 next year, $200,000 a year for the next five years, and then $250,000 in the remaining two years. And at that point, with the way that the plan changes that we've made, we should be funding at the ARC level. So as you can see here, in 2017, the amount that I'd be recommending, assuming the board is, you know, is supportive of the strategy, the meals tax, unless it's, you know, doing better than it has been, wouldn't even cover the OPEB contribution at that level. So then it's going to start to do what it's doing to other communities that are trying to tackle this liability, which is it starts to creep into the general fund receipts and puts pressure on the general fund. But by doing it over a longer period of time where revenues are growing, you know, we should be able to incorporate that. Not incorporating that, you know, ultimately would just cost the community more, you know, down the road. So as you can see here, in, you know, 2015 and '16, those fiscal years, you know, the meals tax supports the strategy. In '17, it would, and forward, it would consume all of the meals tax revenues, and therefore, you know, nothing for roads. That's just, that's the current recommendation at this point. Only decision that's, that we need to make before town meeting is what to do, you know, with next year's funds, which is the $600,000 I'm recommending. But I think that gives us a context to consider the pavement management program that Roger has put together, because he has a recommended funding requirement for next year as a minimum, and then maybe some other things. And so we can be supportive of that, and then, and I'll let Roger articulate what the funding that he's looking for. And then there would still be some additional dollars out of those $610,000, if you're supportive of Roger's recommendation, that we should talk about, should it go all to roads, some to OPEB, some to roads? And that would be the decision point here on the $610,000.
So the good news is that as we improve the roads, our costs to maintain will go down. But remember, this program has only really been in serious effect for a couple of years. And so we're still a long way from having all the roads up to some kind of reasonable road service rating. The good news is that finally, and this took more than 50 years, the state is talking about bonding Chapter 90 money at least over the next five years so that we know ahead of time what our annual appropriation's gonna be when they do the bonding. They haven't done it yet, but they're talking seriously about it. This past, the 2014 fiscal year, the legislature appropriated $300 million statewide for Chapter 90. The governor sequestered $100 million of it. The towns never saw that. Our appropriation for fiscal year '14 was $618,000. My guess is that that $100 million, I know that $100 million hasn't been spent. And both Jay and Senator Timmeltie tell me that they're awash with funds up on the Hill. But the governor won't let go with $100 million, so I don't wanna count on that. But the Speaker now is saying that he wants to appropriate $300 million for fiscal year '15 also. If that happens, that would raise our Chapter 90 allotment by about another $300,000, bring us up close to $920,000, somewhere around there. So there's a possibility the state may do that, but we can't count on that right now. We can't bank on it. It's just not at a point where we can say, yeah, we're certain that's gonna happen. However, the bonding is very positive, because it does give us a future outlook for at least the Chapter 90 funding. The good news about the pavement management plan is that in addition to the things that it does, which is rate the roads, it also has as a base a very accurate GIS. And I have had our technician run every mile of road in Foxborough to determine what the real mileage is in Foxborough, or in what we're really maintaining, and what is accepted and what is not accepted. And I know this has been done before, but this morning, Ryan came to me and said, I finished it. We have another eight miles of road that's not on the state list that's accepted roads in Foxborough. Eight miles is 10% of what we have on their list right now. That will drive our annual appropriation up by another $60-odd thousand. And I was pretty happy with the results of that. But I wouldn't let him get away with just telling me that. I said, you gotta go up and get Bobby Cutler to certify all this, and we need to get it down to the state, down to the district, and get it on our list. No guarantee it'll apply fiscal year '15, because that money's probably already, you know, stacked out somewhere. But we'll give it a shot, but it will apply after that in '16. He got me the list today, so I'll work on it this week and get it back to him and get it to the state. But I challenged him further. I said, okay, of, we actually came up with 135 miles of road total that the town has some sort of stake in. In other words, even if it's a private road, I have to plow it, because the people pay taxes and we have to provide for public safety. We don't maintain them, but we have to plow them. So I told him, the first thing I wanted him to do is take every non-public, private road and exact it from the pavement maintenance management plan, because we're not gonna spend town funds on private roads except snow and ice. And he's doing that as we speak, or just before he went home tonight. And I said, you're gonna come up with a remainder. The remainder will be streets that are not finished, that the planning board may be holding bonds or some type of a cash guarantee on to get them done. A lot of developers walked away in 2008 and 2009, and there are many unfinished streets in the town of Foxborough that we are holding revenue on. It'd be very important to come up with a program that tells exactly what is being held and what can be done to expedite the completion of those roads. Because those, if they are public ways, they have to be voted on by two-thirds voted town meeting to be accepted. And then they have to be added to the list, and it will increase the Chapter 90 allotment further if we do that. I can't tell you what that number is tonight, because I don't know. I don't know how many miles of that type of road we have. But I know we have quite a bit of it, because we were asked a couple of times this year to try to figure out if we could do surge money to do necessary repairs on one of those or two of those streets. And Sharon Wasson will play a big role in that. So for the future, as Randy shows here, it looks like for the next couple of years, we'll have additional meals tax money available for roads, but after that, it will die. And that's probably what needs to happen in the long run. We probably need to get the state to put up a larger share of the town's needs. The MMA did a study a couple of years ago that showed that that the actual funding level at that time should have been 500 and, what'd they say, five? What are they, 100 million? It should have been 528 million. And prices have been pretty static for the last year or two because of the, there's not much inflation in the market. But generally, Mark knows, and I know Jim knows, that general construction items grew up about anywhere around five to six, even higher, percent a year. Like this year, duct line or pipe went up 30%. So you really can't predict on the basis what our needs will be now and in the future for '90. And the state has passed a bill that ties the state gasoline tax to the coal, to the cost of living. And it's controversial, and there's a move afoot to get it rescinded, to make them vote every year, or every other year, or whatever they're going to do. But that could have a serious impact on available Chapter 90 money. My idea is, and I taught, Randy and I have spent a lot of time on this, get as much done as we can get done now, because there's no guarantee we're ever gonna have money like this again. And if we don't get it done now, it's gonna be a long time before we do get it done with the money, with the funding being what it is. And that's why, that was one of the reasons why I requested 500 million on the CIP.
Thousand.
500,000, which is, which is...
I just, whoa.
I'll take that, though. Which is why you see the red $231,000 down below, because that's the portion of the remaining funds that are available now that I would need to get up to 500,000. But Randy and I had a long talk today, and both of us came to the same conclusion. We need to put as much money into roads as we can. This is a one-time opportunity. It's never gonna happen again, unless we get a whole bunch of new restaurants opening up and we have a very successful economy and it drives the meals tax up, so that there may be some money in the future for roadways. Granted, I won't be able to get all the work done in a year, because I don't have the staff available to do that. But the need is there, and I can plan work, and I can, I have some major streets that need to be done that require engineering, and I can get the engineering part done, shelve the plans, and fund the reconstruction when the money's available. So that was gonna be our recommendation to you, that you appropriate the whole balance that's available free cash to roads this year as a one-time appropriation. And I'll live with what we get from then on, and I'll carry some of it forward, granted. If Chapter 90 goes up 100 million, I'll have additional funds. And you can carry Chapter 90 forward as long as you want to. The money never goes away if you don't spend it.
Okay, thank you. Lorraine, any questions?
Uh, yes, just so if this money is appropriated from the meals tax and it isn't spent, is that earmarked to go back in, so the next year when we look at the total, that money's back in there?
The, we're talking about the $610,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, that amount would be appropriated in the capital article, Article 5, along with the roads. And so it's a capital appropriation, so it's a continuing appropriation. It continues on, you know, to the next year, and as you know, we have several capital projects that continue on. So the money would stay within the roads program.
Okay, I was thinking it was linked to an operating budget. Okay, thank you.
Ginny?
You know, I think we have the OPEB payments pretty much under control, and I think this is a great use of the remainder of the money. I mean, town meeting voted for OPEB and roads. And I agree, it's time to do the roads, at least that's tangible. People can appreciate the roads, and I think that would be, I would go along with using it for the roads.
James?
Yeah, the first question I had, I think you answered it, Roger, the, so the money comes in, and it's not so much going for materials, it's going for staff, engineering, all this stuff that goes with...
We don't pay for our staff with the money. We don't pay for our staff with the money.
Okay, so it's not coming, that doesn't go towards the operating. So if you've got projects to do, who's gonna do it? Is it overtime? Is it consultants that we hire?
Well, if, say we're gonna design projects, most of, anything that needed to be designed, most likely would go out under a three quote to a consultant. And I've shopped the fields out there. I haven't settled on one consultant. I'm using whoever wants to propose.
And the physical labor, is that in-house or are we hiring contractors?
It depends on how big the project is. And like if we had a, let's say we had a road that had a lot of castings on it, I might contract that out under surge. But all the contracting that I do for roads is under surge. All the items, and the good news about this is, if I had certainty of funding, I could put bigger quantities into my annual request to surge. That would drive the quantities up and it would drive the price down. It's, you know, supply-demand kind of thing. The contractors bid less if they think there's a lot of opportunity for a lot of work.
So, big picture, this disappears in two thousand sixteen, the remainder of the roads money that's coming from the meals tax slides over to the.
OPEB.
OPEB entirely.
Right. So I'd have to get by on chapter ninety money from then on.
Or the, you know, the board could certainly revisit, you know, the policies. It's just a recommendation at this point.
And you're bringing the meals tax up, did you say three percent per year?
Three percent per year, until we see something different.
Okay, and that's based on the same number of restaurants and establishments we have already?
There's actually been a little bit of growth in that already, but it really hasn't. There was actually one quarter in there, which was interesting, you know, where we actually, fourth quarter of two thousand thirteen actually dropped. So there's still, we still don't have a good history to have a very predictable revenue stream. It's good enough to know that we're at this level, but, and I certainly expect it to increase. At what rate? Not sure. You know, three percent? You know, in that industry, it's conservative. But, you know, we need to see some history, I think, before we can put a bigger number out there.
And the last question I had is probably not directed, maybe a little towards you, but not you, Roger, more towards this board. The OPEB special commission that was put together by the state came back at the end of last, beginning of last year with a report that said, this is where the OPEB expenses are coming from. It's population, it's retirement, it's the demographics. So we can keep paying money towards OPEB, but on the other side of that, how are we controlling the costs? And it's more of a discussion for tonight, but some of the stuff that we've already started to do with the insurance and unions and stuff, but making sure we have a handle on that, so we're just not taking it in and paying OPEB and not controlling the costs. And I've talked to a couple of different town managers that control it a different way, but I think that's a good discussion for this table at a different time. But I don't wanna lose sight of, I mean, sometimes that's the bigger picture, not just the revenue to pay it, but the actual expense that it's going towards.
I, excellent point. The board, combined with the administration, has done a phenomenal job over the last three years to address the town's cost. Unfortunately, it's just about cost shifting, but it impacts, you know, what ultimately the town has to pay. There's a bigger issue on cost that's an industry issue. But as far as what we can manage, the board has taken excellent steps to reduce the pre-sixty-five retiree percentage from seventy percent to fifty percent. That has a real impact on the OPEB liability. The, all of the changes to the health plans that were negotiated last year to the GIC-like plans has had a dramatic impact on premiums. As I said last time I was here, our actuary, we have to update the actuarial study on the OPEB liability every two years. That is in process right now. We should have that information within about a month. We've already sent all of the data for them to crunch, and we've already gotten some preliminary indications based on the rates that they're seeing. Again, they haven't looked at this for two years. Based on the rates that they're seeing, they're saying, you're going to see a significant drop in your liability, all things being equal, just with the changes that you've made to date. Don't hold me to it. They're at the beginning of their analysis, but he was talking, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty percent. So we're at fifty-two million now. Again, there are a lot of other moving parts in this. So I'm expecting, you know, a nice reduction to that, which should mean our, the ARC, the annual required contribution, should get closer to us. So maybe we don't have to go up as high as what you see at the end of this spreadsheet. Maybe we hit it earlier for now. But that's the current data point. You know, I just wanna say, the board and the town has done a great job at managing what we can on cost to date.
Okay.
So in summary, there's still a few balls up in the air. They're not gonna land in time for our annual town meeting. We think this is really important, and we think we got enough of a outlook of the future to be able to recommend it. And that's it, really.
More questions? Okay. Obviously, is this a vote or just a?
You know, I'm sure Roger's looking for an indication. Obviously, the CIP committee, you know, will be the ones, you know, be taking this up for consideration or recommendation back to the board, but I'm sure Roger's looking for.
I think a sense of the board is adequate.
I would support the use of all the remaining funds for the roads.
I also support that.
Yeah.
Same, yeah.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Godspeed.
Thank you.
Now I have to find a replacement for Bob. But not for me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay. We've got everything on the regular agenda taken care of, right? So we entertain a motion to go on executive session or? Yep. Dick, you got something to say before we go on executive session for some reason?
Open meeting law issues. I don't think there's a need at this point to go into executive session to discuss that. Certainly, everything I've got to say can be said in open session. At one time, we were concerned that perhaps my opinion about an open meeting law violation might have an adverse impact on either the attorney general's position or on the pending ABCC case. But those, my opinion on one of those has already been made public. So there's no adverse impact that I can see. Yeah, there's no need to go into executive session. I'm happy to talk about these issues in public.
Okay. I wasn't expecting this, but. How do you wanna go about this, then?
Well, originally I had come in because we had anticipated that one of the citizens who has been concerned about open meeting law issues was going to be here during the public addressing part of the time of the meeting. That didn't happen. And, you know, Jim has on a number of occasions in the past asked the board to address open meeting law concerns. So that's why I'm here, is to talk to those issues, to provide my opinion on the allegations that have been made and to make some suggestions as to what I think the board ought to do. For the board's consent, I'll just go ahead and do that.
Can I ask a question? So, we have already responded to these complaints.
Yes.
At the initial level.
Right.
And now we understand that they've been forwarded to the AG's office for review.
Yes.
So, I believe the next step is that there would be some investigation conducted by the AG's office, which would involve.
Ongoing.
Right, interviewing different people, perhaps getting information together. So, I feel that that's the process we've always gone through in the past. We need to stick with that process. I am not sure that I'm comfortable to have any discussion of opinions about that. That's between the town and the AG's office to respond to when that time comes. And I'd like to see that process follow its normal course that it has always done in the past. This is very different. What's being proposed right now is very different from what we've ever done before with open meeting law complaints.
Lorraine, the decision to talk about the open meeting law allegations in open session is the board's decision. It's not my decision. I'm happy to do it. My counsel is that you do so. But it's your decision, not mine, as to whether you wanna have this discussion. I think the issue has been tearing this board apart. You've spent too much time and too much energy on it. I, my counsel is that we discuss it, get it over with, and don't let it be a distraction anymore. But it's not my decision, Lorraine. So you and your colleagues need to decide whether you wanna proceed or not. I think you should. There's nothing that I think I have to say that it's harmful or inimical to the process. I don't think it will upset pending litigation, but it's not my decision to talk, to do that.
Ginny?
I don't, I don't see what there is to discuss. I think, like Lorraine said, the process is going ahead. At this point, it's at the attorney general's. I don't know why the board would be discussing this.
You'd be discussing it because it's been an issue that one of your members has patiently asked you to discuss. It's an issue that is of great concern to him. It's an issue of public interest. I think you should do it. I think you should get this behind you. But, you know, if the board doesn't want, if the board collectively doesn't want to address it, then you don't, but you should.
What is to be addressed? I mean, what is to be discussed?
What's to be addressed is two things, Ginny. I think there's a crying need for an explanation of the impact of this issue. How important is it? What does it really mean? How does it affect the board going forward? And then I think the board ought to talk about a written policy with regard to how you handle open meeting law complaints in the future. There's a lot of misunderstanding in the public about what's occurred in the past. I hope I could clarify that. I think there's been a lot of unnecessary attacks on people on this board because of, because we haven't had a chance to openly discuss what happened. I think those should be addressed. And so I think it would be, serve the board well to do it, all of you.
But if, I don't understand, the discussion's gonna take place at the attorney general's office.
No, it's not.
If we just.
Ginny, it's not gonna take place.
Rendering an opinion is gonna come from the attorney general's office.
That's right.
If we discuss this, whether there was a violation or there wasn't a violation, that's, that's a separate, that's a separate discussion. And why should we have two separate discussions on this when it's the attorney general's office is gonna render an opinion?
Well, the attorney general will render an opinion. That's absolutely correct. And the attorney general is not, is not in a position to try to help this board get over the issues that have been talked about publicly. Look, I come here because I was asked to come here. If the board doesn't want me to do this, I won't do it.
Well, why did you, I just don't understand. The process is going forward. It's at the attorney general's office. But like every other previous open meeting violation, the process has gone on that the attorney general's office makes, renders an opinion.
Right.
Why is this any different?
Because I think there's clearly a flaw in the process. If that's, if it were as simple as that, this wouldn't have been creating the heat that it's been creating. My advice is to get it behind you, but.
The other thing I'll add is, I'll be honest, I expected to talk about this in executive session, and I guess now we're not.
That's still an option. If the board wants to have a full discussion, it's your option to make that vote and do that. But I can tell you that initially I was not in favor of having a discussion about this at all. And I was surprised by comments, Jim, that you made in the paper. And because, you know, I don't think that's necessarily helpful to a board when board members go to the press and, you know, make comments or whatever. But in doing that, I think that kind of, and I mentioned this to Lorraine in a conversation we had the other day, that it provides an opportunity to have this discussion and to explain that the AG's office is really the arbiter of this matter. And regardless of what Dick's opinion is or what my opinion is as to whether or not there was a violation in any of the matters, the one, the opinion that matters is that of the AG's office. So, you know, maybe this is an opportunity to have just a discussion without anybody getting their dander up and without there being any yelling and screaming, and to get it out and get it in the open and move forward. Because you all know the amount of time that you've all invested in this subject. I know Dick has invested a lot, and I've invested a lot in it. It's really becoming, it's bogging us down. And if one member insists that they're not gonna participate on certain issues because of it, then where is the board gonna go? And where does that, how does that help this board deal with their business? So, it's out there. You have a couple of options. You can not talk about it, which is what has been the case. You can talk about it first in open session, and then if you wanna come back with any kind of resolution, I mean, in executive session, then come back in open session if you wanna do that. Or you can just talk about it in open session.
Well, the tone right here, I appreciate it, 'cause it's keeping the emotions out of it. And that's what I was kinda hoping to achieve. But, you know, you're gonna sit in the middle seat here someday if you stick around doing this. And I'll tell you, this has been bogging down ain't the word. Suffocating is more like the word. The amount of time I have to put in with this issue. And there's more than one issue. There's four. So I would rather see this right now, take five minutes, make it go away, and just end it. And then I don't have to talk to Dick Gellman about this. I don't have to talk to Bob about this. And, you know, in my opinion, it's all about opinions. That's what I've learned here the most. It's all about law. Law is an opinion. It's never a guaranteed. Case law study is a matter of opinion. You know, I think this is simple. Let's get it behind us. I thought Lorraine did an outstanding job last week. She disagreed with the, I think, I'm trying to put words, I think you disagree with Dick's decision. But she sat up here, she made an announcement, and it was clear, it was simple, and that one went away.
I think the real point is, is that, you know, when I think of open meeting law, I think of the law as, I mean, it's right in one of the cases that was cited in Dick's opinion on this issue that I read into last week. The purpose is to ensure that there are no secret deliberations. What I read last week, every single topic there was confirmed that that was not my opinion, but the opinion of special counsel as was stated to me. And everything was vetted publicly during both hearings. So reading that in last week was an additional way of ensuring that there's absolutely no issue here. But there wasn't anything ever hidden from the public.
No, and that's what you stated very well. Nobody intentionally. It's a very difficult law.
That's what I don't understand, is that we've gone through this for each of these four issues and looked at them that way. And in each case, nothing was ever kept from the public.
No, you're right.
So, there is no issue that there are secret deliberations going on here. So what all the, you know, Dick, you said it to me yourself. This is a waste of time. This is a waste of taxpayer dollars. I'm sorry.
Lorraine, that's right. I think two things. I think Jim has a right to have these issues addressed. And I would appreciate the opportunity to try to defend you and Ginny. That's what this is about, so that people understand at least my full opinion on this. That's all this is about.
And I think.
And get it behind you.
And I think it'll clear the air. And, and you know what? Then we can just move on. And I'd appreciate that, you know, I really would. 'Cause you know what? We're all above this. Everybody sitting at this table, everybody in this room is above this. So let's try and just spend a few minutes and move on past this, okay?
So with that, it's really, there have been four allegations. We don't have to talk about all four of them, but the second and the third one, which have to do with an administrative issue and have to do with subcommittee, my opinion was there was no violation. That's, I think, well-known. And the fourth one, Lorraine, thank you very much. I was of the opinion that there was an inadvertent violation of the statute. You've addressed it. Thank you. The first one has to do with allegation of a serial meeting violation when. The first one has to do with allegation of a serial meeting violation when one of your members attended a meeting in the morning and then Ginny and Lorraine attended a, a meeting in the afternoon. And as I understand it, the same general topic, it all had to do with Splitsville, although different things were discussed.
No.
And it was, all right. So that's, so that's where we have that.
Let Dick finish.
That, that disagreement. I thought and think that that was a violation of the open meeting law. And that's what I've said. Having said that, having said that, there's absolutely no doubt in my mind that if there were a violation, it was inadvertent, it was not, not intended, it was because, it came about because the open meeting law is a very complex technical statute. And the way case law defines particular matters or subject matters is very broadly. And because the public policy basis for the open meeting law is so important, I, and based on guidance we get from the AG, you need, I tend to look at and give it a very liberal interpretation. But I want to make clear that I understand that you disagree and you disagree. That, that's fine. I'm, fine, I have no problem with that. We will disagree. And that, that's okay. And I can assure you that the Attorney General makes, the Attorney General makes their own judgment. They don't particularly care what I think or what other town council thinks. It's, the whole process is set up to take it out of the community and to make, and for the Attorney General to make an independent judgment. All I did in that respect was I received a phone call from the Assistant Attorney General handling it, looking for certain facts. That's all we gave. He doesn't, he, his, he in this case, doesn't call and ask for my opinion. That, that's not what this is about. It's just they needed some factual. The reason they called us, my firm, is because we had provided the AG with the three opinions that we were asked by the town to provide. I can also say without any doubt that none of you participated with the intent to hide anything from the public. That's not what this board is about. And I think that these particular allegations haven't warranted the amount of energy that we've had to spend on it. But having said that, the issue of how do you comply with the open meeting law? How do you understand it? How do you deal with it in the future? Is a very, very important issue. You all know that, and I know you all agree with that. And so, you know, my suggestion is that you task town administrator, the current one or the one you've just selected, to come up with a written policy. I'm not going to tell you what it is. Surprisingly, I think council ought to be asked to address these issues. But, you know, come up with a written policy and then you know where you're going. It's also true that in my opinion, in all of these instances, whatever violation there had been, has been cured. By that, I mean, it's, it, you, you've done the right thing. You've, you've expressed in open session what you, what the law requires you to do. I don't think there's any impact whatsoever on the, on the, how you deal with Splitsville go forward. I don't think you've adversely impacted it. And, and I don't think anybody intended this to be more than it is. So I hope that clarifies it. You know, now people know. You know, I think that, Jim, you've got absolutely the right to bring this up. You do it out of a sense of duty. Ginny and Lorraine, you act out of your sense of responsibility to the town. You spend your time, you go to these meetings, and then you get sort of hit with this open meeting law violation when you never intended that to be the case at all. And it's a shame. It's a shame for all of you that, you know, you're all giving so much to this community, that you're angry with one another, you're angry with me. I mean, it shouldn't have happened. It's, this particular alleged violation isn't the kind of thing that, I mean, there may be a technical violation here, but, but the open meeting law really is designed to avoid these purposeful, you know, talk behind the back, meet secretly. That's not what happened here. That just didn't happen here. And, and so it's gotten much too much attention. But, but the issue's important. Citizens have a right, look, I'm sorry, citizens have a right to come up and say, that's just it. That's the process. If you're a public official, you're going to be criticized, deservedly or not. That's what will happen. So, you know, my recommendation is put it behind you. I don't want to talk to the chairman anymore. I don't want to talk to Bob anymore about this. He doesn't want to talk to him. Enough of this. Put it behind you. Ask Bob to come up with a, a policy as to how you go forward and that's, and that's how you ought to turn this unnecessarily negative event into something more positive. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, let me explain where, where I was coming from. And Bob, I appreciate you bringing up the, the newspaper article. I was asked to participate in the meeting. Mark, a resident came in and said they had a complaint about an open meeting violation. It involved you three, and maybe that's why I got the, the short straw, but I sat with Bob. The person came in, laid out all the, the issues and the, and the concerns, and had a letter that said, on behalf of the board, we don't believe that there was a violation. But if there was, it was cured. So this person went and she had a file this big and said, this is why I think it's a violation. This is why I don't think it was cured. How do you get from all of this, please explain, to a letter that says, on behalf of the board, we don't think there was a violation? At that meeting, Bob wrote the letter, and it was explained that he didn't do the investigation. It was Dick Gellman that did the investigation, which was different than all the other three that came after that. So I had a discussion with Dick and basically he said, oh, you didn't get the memo, there was a violation. All I wanted was to clean up this mess before it went to the Attorney General. Because it's our responsibility as a board to answer that question, not the Attorney General. The process is the complaint comes to the town, there's so many days for the town to do their due diligence, do their investigation. I was told that people didn't want to participate in the investigation that worked at town hall. The letter went out.
That's not true, Jim.
I was told, you weren't in that meeting, that there were people that didn't participate that was asked.
Dick told me the same thing, and he's been, and there's been a discussion about that, and that is just not true.
You know what? I, I sat very patiently while the three of you spoke.
Can we keep this at the town? We've had, we've had a good tone. I want the voices raised.
I just think that the facts have to be correct as they're coming out.
If we're going to have this dialogue, I sat very patiently while the three of you guys spoke. Okay? So at that meeting, again, I was told that Bob didn't do the investigation, it was somebody else. All that was asked was the person brought it back to Bob and says, take all this stuff, can you bring it back to the person? The attorney that we hire that did the investigation and ask him again. The answer that came back is we will work it out, we will, I will talk to the ladies, I will work it out. It was the impression and it was specifically said there was a violation. So my question is, how does it get from an attorney that said there was a violation onto the letterhead that said there wasn't a violation? All the other three were investigated by him. So all I said to the board was, can we please figure this out before it gets to the Attorney General? Week after week after week after canceled meeting to discuss it. Now it's in the Attorney General's hands, okay? It started out with the newspaper. When it first came out, there was articles by both of you that said, and specifically you, Ginny, I can't speak about it because I was told not to, but.
I never said that.
There was no comment, but it looks like whoever made the, the accusation had help from an attorney. That's what started this whole thing. So now this person is sitting here saying, what do I do? The time went up, the town didn't respond, that person brought it to the Attorney General, and it's in the Attorney General's lap right now. I've got an attorney saying there was a violation. I've got a town manager that says there wasn't a violation, and I've got a board that doesn't want to talk about it. And now we're going into the Attorney General process and we're going into litigation with Splitsville with this, all three of these things occurring at once. And if I hear one more time that you didn't violate it based on your opinion, based on your opinion, you've got an opinion and you've got opinion, now we all just sit wait. We wait for the Attorney General to come back with the finding, because that's what the mess is right now. I don't know how else to avoid it. And you just said today, like I said, there was a violation. You've never said that, Dick. You've never put it in writing, other than all these meetings that were going around. Last time we spoke, you thought you said it publicly. You went back to the tape, you, you, you realized that you didn't. So what are we supposed to do as a board? When someone comes in with a complaint, we give them a form letter that says, in our best ability, you did not, we didn't, we didn't violate it and send them on the way. I don't want to be doing that. Well, I'm going to be gone in a couple of years, people are going to come and go. But if this board can't act responsibly and, and address something from their paid attorney, then we've got bigger issues.
Jim, I, I kind of resent some of the things you're saying right now, and I'd be quite honest with you, because.
Dick had asked me two times to ask him publicly, and he would set this straight. And that's, that's what I've been doing.
I, I've been trying to explain to you, and Dick has explained to you, that the reason why it was answered the way it was, and you just don't want to accept the fact that it does not say there was no violation. It says, we don't believe there was, and if there was one, we've cured it.
Okay. And that, and that's from the very discussion. We can define the word and and but. But when you say, we don't believe there was a violation, when our attorney said there was a violation, come on, you know, and I know you're an attorney and I know why you're doing it, but that's not the way that the other, then why not write, we don't believe there was, on all other three that came out?
Hold on, hold on. So what I'm thinking here is we put it behind us now, right?
Dick, was there a violation? Put it on writing, you know, fix it, cure it according to the thing we would have been done months ago. He's telling me today there was a violation. And you're saying, we don't believe there was a violation, and it's the same thing.
Dick has, Dick has written that he did not do the investigation, so.
Dick did the investigation.
Everybody, hold on, hold on now, please. I do still try and control the meetings.
Sorry.
We said what we said. It's all cleared out. We're not going to beat it up now. What I'm going to say is now, would our goal be to move forward to set a policy that if there's a violation at this table, at this board and future boards, that we're going to have a policy? We're all going to think about it, how we want to get it set forth and bring this together. Is that the goal?
Yep.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm just asking. I mean, I know you want.
Well, why, if it's working so well.
It's not working. We need to set.
No. You know, I'm wondering why doing, you know, if it came in and it was answered correctly, why do we need a policy? Would they tell me it was answered correctly?
If there's, if there's a complaint set at the table again.
That it's answered correctly, so why do we need a policy? That's my point.
It's worked, it's worked the way it should work in the past, so.
Dick, let's just cut to the chase. Did you do the investigation?
I, I began the investigation, and I've actually gone back and looked at the communications I had with Randy. I began the investigation. At some point, and I don't remember one, and, and I'm not faulting anybody at all here, at some point, town manager, Bob took, took, took it over. And I went far enough in my investigation to think that there was a violation, and I think there was, because I look at the breadth of what a matter is, quote matter, more, more broadly than, than you, you folks do. And so when I asked Randy to participate, but by, by then I think he had been told by Bob that it came back to town hall, so that's how that ended.
So is that the policy? We start with an attorney and then it, and, you know, Lorraine, I, I just, you know, let me, let me take a step back.
Do you want me to read, do you want me to read this?
The open, the open meeting law is very difficult. You know, we've all sent emails, we've all had meetings. Fine, you know, maybe I violated in the past, you know, the planning board, the conservation, it's difficult. But when a resident brings it up and says, did you violate it? I think that resident deserves a black and white answer. Not, I started it, but I started the investigation, but then somebody took it over. Now we've got one investigation from a town manager. The next one you started, but you finished it and you put it down in writing, as you did the other. All I'm asking for is a little consistency, so we don't have to worry about this before. If, if you did the investigation, put it on your letterhead and finish the job. Why, why start something and then have this mess because we didn't finish it? That's all I'm saying.
Jim, a lot of it's revisionist history, and you're going back months and how things happened here and there.
November 26th.
Decisions were made at times for reasons they were made. We're not going to get into a full discussion about that. And you don't, you just don't want to accept the fact of the way things are worded sometimes to protect people or whatever the reasons are. And they do answer the question.
So when I, when I read it, it says, we don't believe there's a, there was a violation.
And that was the opinion of the two people who were alleged to have violated the open meeting law. That was their opinion.
No, you said, on behalf of the board, we don't believe there was a violation.
Correct.
You didn't say on behalf of two people.
Because it's, because the complaint is made against the board.
So the board investigates themselves, Bob? Come on.
Jim, in the past, the board has not discussed these. The town manager has addressed them solely on behalf of the board as the representative for the board. That's the way, reason why it was done that way this time. And when, when this thing has become much more than it has to be, much more than it really is, then we involve counsel. And that's why he responded to the other ones. Because of, you know, people not being satisfied with the responses or whatever the reason is, we involve counsel at that time.
Jim, let me, let me also say that, you know, I think this is the discussion the board should be having about what is the policy? You know, I, I fully appreciate and understand how, how Bob responded to the first allegation, you know. But the question is, as a matter of policy, given the importance of the open meeting law, do you want to take, as a board, is it your policy that you want to take litigators? I don't mean that in a bad sense. You know, this is an allegation against the client. Litigators defend clients. And so Bob took an attorney's point of view on how to answer that. Is that the policy the board should have or because of the nature of, on the importance of the public meeting law, maybe our policy ought to be, look, we just do it straight. By that, I mean, if you think there's a violation, that's we say it and it's been cured.
So for the record, let's just do it straight. If there's a, if there's a, if there's a statute out there that, that there's a law and we believe it's broken, we say it's broken. We don't answer it like an attorney. So I'll put that on the, on the, on the table and see how you want to respond to that.
There's a point for understanding, Jim, just so that you know, if you're going to do it, take it that way, then every time there's an allegation of an open meeting, you're going to have to have a discussion in open session potentially about the matter before it's responded to. And that's why it hasn't been done in the past. That's why it's been left to the manager to respond. And when there's a legitimate concern, you know, you, you get the input you need to get to respond to it, but to have a full discussion about it in open session, that's never been the practice.
Well, I think, this is my opinion, okay? I think if we get one in the future, it goes right to town council and let him handle it. And, and obviously it's going to come to your office, or soon to be somebody else's office, and the guy after that, or girl. But I think that's how it should be handled. We've never had this issue before. That's what makes it kind of harder to understand. I mean, we've had, I had one against me and four, three or four board members back in '07 about doing a visit.
There were four in 2012, but never discussed like this.
Yeah. Well, I'm talking about the one I was involved in. I'm just thinking, the one I was involved in was, I was told by my attorney that a special counsel, that it would not be a violation. I asked him point blank, if there would be a violation if all four of us meet here at the same time? No, it's an inspection mark, you'll be fine. Well, it went to the AG's office, and they found us all in violation.
Please make clear that that was counsel other than litigated.
It was special counsel. And so it happens. But you know what? I'm not going to get all defensive about it. I just, okay, I'm moving on. And that's the way I did it.
So that's all I was asking, Mark, is could, could we recognize it, fix it, and move on? But nobody wants to do it, and now it's in the Attorney General's office.
You know why I backed off on it? And let me finish, Ginny. I know everybody, and I want to keep this at this tone. I don't like anything, any tone higher than this, and then we're just going to stop talking. Because I've been talking about this 10 times more than, well, probably 100 times more than anybody when it comes to dealing with it and the cost of the town for dealing with this. The, now I lost my train of thought. See how tight I'm talking about this? I'm not even trying to be sarcastic here. Where were we on this?
I think we should just, you know, at a future meeting, maybe with the new town manager, talk about.
A policy.
A policy.
Yeah, but the thing is.
I think we, we have had an existing policy, not maybe written, but a certain procedure in place that has served the town well. I think, you know, we need to think about, we need to think about going to council on, on matters like this all the time.
If a matter comes in front of the board and it's going to be reported to the office, I imagine, it goes to the town clerk or does it go to the town manager? What was the?
It's already gone through that. It's already gone through that, it's gone through the town manager, it's at the attorney general's, and now we go through the investigation.
I think what made, here's where we are, is what made me hold off on how I'm going to have this discussion, because it was in the hands of the A.G. So, it made me question-
Mark, Mark, to correct you, it was not in the hands of the A.G.
At the beginning-
No, it was not. It comes to the town, the town does their investigation, the town responds to the, responds back to the person that made the claim.
Within how many days?
And doesn't that report go to the A.G.'s office?
And that also goes to the A.G.'s office.
So, when we had our meeting, and I was told that there was a violation, but our letter said, "We don't believe there was a violation," but I guess there was a violation, but we didn't believe it. There was, Bob, there was plenty of time to address it at the board before it went to the attorney general. Now, is that the attorney general, so we sit back now?
On the timeline, we had one, two meetings canceled because of snow and storms. I believe the person who sent the letters had a timeline. You complained to the town, help me out, because you know law a little bit more than-
We blew it, we missed it.
All right, so we missed it, so let's move on and not miss it again.
Well, it's out of our hands now, so, next time it comes in, we'll, I don't know.
I mean, I, I think that's what the board should concentrate on, not what's, not what has happened in the past. The A.G.'s got it, it'll, fine, and I've already stated, I don't think there's any consequences to those particular issues. I don't think they matter very much at all, frankly, they're just not that important. But the issue's important, Jim, and I think the board should address the issue, go forward. It's as simple as that. You know, my own take on it, for what it's worth, is that it's a tough law, it's a very technical law. I don't blame council for making a mistake and telling you what to do. It happens, it just happens. So, you know, my own take on it is, is that you have your town manager deal with it initially. I think town council, whoever that might be at the time, ought to have a gander at it, take a look at it, and, you know, that, your town council give you a sense of how it ought to run out, and, and that's what the policy should be. But look at a policy, go forward. These things, the A.G. will, will say, "I agree, I disagreed." You know, I'd be shocked if the A.G. did anything more than that, even if the A.G. fines and can, agrees with, look, I've, I've rendered dozens of opinions on open meeting law. Most of the time, the A.G. agrees, not always, Lorraine, not always. You know, maybe I got it wrong, entirely possible. I make mistakes.
We all make mistakes.
We all make mistakes. So, but, but I, I think in this case, whatever conclusion the attorney general reaches, they'll act, they'll, I'd be shocked if they didn't conclude it was unintended, innocent violation, you know, and it's been cured, don't do it again. And that's, that's going to be the end of it. That's, that, nothing else is going to happen on this thing, you know, no one's going to jail, no one's going to be fined, no one's going to be penalized or criticized. They understand how difficult it is for laypeople on boards to deal with these complex, factually intense matters, they get that, then no one's out to, no one at the A.G.'s level, and certainly at my level, out to cause harm to people who volunteer their time on, on boards like this. But you should have a policy, you have a written policy and follow it. And that's, I think, what Jim's been asking for, and let's all shake hands and go forward with stuff that, that matters.
Anything else, James? I mean, because now's the time, if you want to add something. I'd rather you just did it now, instead of, you know, letting it eat up at us later, you know?
Mark, I, I'm just disappointed in, in that we had the opportunity to fix something, and we're all still waiting for the attorney general, and, you know, I'm, I'm disappointed.
That's the process, man, that's the process.
Bob, then, then let's do a form letter that says, "Every time that someone has a complaint, we say, 'We don't think there's a violation,' and we'll send it back." Because what you're saying, and I understand what you're doing, you're speaking as an attorney, we have an attorney we paid, we should have let him finish it, and we should have let him did, did, do on this one what he, what we let him do on the other three. So, no, you know, now, now we're going to waste more time with the attorney general, and it's probably going to come back in a couple of months in the middle of the Splitsville issue, and we're all sitting, we're all going to sit around saying, "This is something that could have been handled back in November, back in December."
It was handled, and that's all I'm going to say.
We'll see, Bob, we'll see, Bob.
Well, the other thing, Jim, if it wasn't such a heated topic, I don't think anybody would have paid any attention to it, and would have said, "Well, that was a small mistake." But because it's-
That was my point, it could have been handled before it became a heated topic.
But it became a heated topic.
It was cured.
Well, it's-
So, you know, that's your opinion, and we keep going back to the same thing. She's saying we didn't violate it, you're saying it was cured, he's saying it was a violation, Bob said he doesn't think it was a violation. You know, you know what? I won't go to any more of these meetings to, to figure out everybody else's issue. Then you guys handle it yourself when this comes up, and when, when it comes up with me, we'll just give everything to the attorney, they'll give it to the town manager, and then we'll give it to the attorney general, because this is what we're dealing with. It's, it's disappointing.
Well, I, I mean, you, you made that perfectly clear, I just don't know where you want me, what else you want me to do or say. I mean, I-
My, my point is, we're past all that. If you want to put on the agenda to come up with a new policy, but where we are right now is we're, we're dealing with something that's unfinished, because, because nobody knows right now, because of what happened.
Is that it? Put on the agenda for the future, Bob?
Already made a note.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Now, so much for executive session, article number one. Who's got the, did you take these on us? You took my agenda. All right, you need to read that in.
Okay. So, I move that we enter into executive session. First topic's attorney, John Davis, pending litigation, Wellner Dutton, and insurance discussion. And then, board of selectmen to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations